No one wants. They're not assuming they're showing up.
That's true, it's the very first. It's the best budget to turn budget meeting turnout generation doing like a Facebook group, you have to insert your. It's your questions. What is your address?
Okay. Well, I will call the order this. March fifth meeting of the village of the village of Schumersburg Board of Trustees. Tonight's agenda is budget focused. My hope is we can go through. Any of the items from the general budget that we either had questions on or left open last time. Maybe even put it to bed tonight. And if so, depending on which time is left. I think water and sewer tend to be generally a little bit. More streamlined to begin with, so we'll see. How far we get. Um. Feel like there might have been something else we needed to do tonight. Was there anything else, Jess?
No.
Wait, isn't the law? Isn't the capital? We need to introduce the override law?
I believe we do.
I thought there was today. Only remember. There was an agenda in Dropbox.
See, you're more efficient than you thought. Do it in your sleep.
So you have need to introduce the annual, our annual tax cap override. For those who may watch at home at some point, or maybe watching now back in twenty twenty eleven. Twenty eleven or twenty twelve, New York State adopted a law which says that municipalities are limited to how much. Their tax levy can be increased year over year. But that that municipal board can override that. We have chosen to override it every year, even in a year when we have not needed to increase the levy because. Without a lot of assistance from New York State to pay for things like fire and EMS. It's actually doesn't make a lot of sense to limit us on. What we need to raise to pay for those things, so. Simply introducing the law, which if proved would allow us to increase our tax levy by greater than this year's limit, which. Think is a little more than two percent. And so the law has not been introduced, so we can post it as a draft. And we just need to set. The public hearing date. Which I can find my calendar. We need five days, I believe, for local law, is that right? So. I would suggest that we simply keep our Monday. March twenty fourth meeting date, basically our second. Scheduled monthly meeting. For the purpose of the public hearing for that local law. You would, that's okay with everyone? Just then you can notice that. This week. And then if we have any other agenda items, we can sneak into the twenty fourth. We don't, then it'll be a relatively short meeting, I would expect. Okay. Just let me know when that's been noticed. All right, budget, so. General budgets, we had. Couple of items I wanted to shift, so we starting on the revenue side. Just comparing my numbers to Jessica's spreadsheet here. On the revenue side, the only thing I'm suggesting we might change. It is. The interest on reserves, so we have received an offer from the trust company, which I'm going to have a conversation with them about. And as well, where the money currently sits at night class, interest rates are still relatively, I think, four point two nine or something as of yesterday. So I actually think we can bump that up to eighty five, which is what we would, we will actually have received for this year. I do think even if rates come down a little bit, I think we can hit that number. If that's all, if anyone, unless anyone disagrees, I think. If you, if you, so if you do the math on the, when is the fire truck coming? Twenty six?
Yes.
So if we do the math on what's in the reserves now, plus what we are budgeting to add. In this budget. At current interest rates, we would earn something like ninety five and change. So if rates drop a little bit, then I think we can still hit eighty five.
Which line is this for?
Eight twenty four oh two.
There it is, okay. Eighty five, you said?
Yeah. Now, just one conversation we should have with Dwayne at some point is because those interests are accruing in a reserve. But we're showing the revenue in general. There has to be a mechanism to get it out of reserves and into general. I don't think the easiest way is to actually pull the interest from reserves. I think the easiest way is to do. An adjustment to what goes in. To reflect. The difference of what was earned in that reserve line, if that makes sense?
It does, so right now all it's doing is increasing that. So you would like not to that.
Because that's how we're showing it. Otherwise, it's not revenue to the general fund.
Right, okay.
So that's a question for Dwayne, how to, how to account for that, and maybe that's, maybe he has another way to account for it.
Those. That interest. Just for reserves in the general.
Correct, so that does not include water.
Jess, can you? Remind me, right now, I believe the current practice is to pay the reserve accounts. Or to make those contributions, I should say, at the end of the year?
We identify that as the. Why do we do that? And then realizing the cash flows are a little bit limited, which is in part why we have done that to wait for the EMS contracts come. So it's my intention to fund them. Actually, I'll fund last week, so if I have this week or next week. Right, do funded earlier, it could be more interesting.
Sort of fund them for the following, like for this upcoming budget year? Now, or you're funding the previous, so can we fund these? Reserve accounts that we're budgeting for now? Earlier in the year, can we fund them?
Yes, I think that was a target, and again, I think we might. Be hemmed in by the fire EMS contracts coming in in February. I, right now, if I had to tell you, I'd say, can't imagine that in February, but I could be wrong, so we'll play position.
Is it possible, like stagger it as we go to get as much money into those accounts as soon as possible and to make sure that, because this feels like a big jump? Right, like the. You know?
So, and for the record, this year, right now, is the soonest we would have been able. I just thought the final checks.
So no reason to think that next year would be any different?
Probably not, so it's. Until. It's not a formula. It's not a best practice. It, it was a function of cash flow needs. In. We'll say June through December, January.
Right.
At a period of time when. General was lending to water. So since we've gotten water rates caught up, and we can hopefully. See in the number, begin to pay general back, we'll have more cash flow flexibility, so yeah, in, in. Two, three years. It's possible we could fund many, probably not all of the reserve accounts sooner.
But that makes sense, because we still will be limited by not being able for property taxes by the county. Until they do, so that's a chunk that we don't have, and then because fire being less. It's funded for half of the year, right, it's a calendar year, our fiscal year, we're still going to be a little bit hemmed in, but certainly that's a great number to think what could be funded earlier.
And some of that is because, again, if we go back a few years, if the property tax. Levy at one point was under a million. And we received eighty five percent of that in June. Versus the much larger. Influx of fire EMS dollars in February. So it's basically the village gets paid twice a year, if you want to think of it that way, June is actually not the bigger number. Although it's, it's making an attempt to get closer. Yeah, so if that's okay, then eighty five for reserves, we see the adjustment in that rental wireless. Line. Really? Does anybody else have any questions on the? Yeah. Mortgage tax of fifteen, yeah, so chips, are we? Are we at ninety?
So Dusty wants to do. Dusty wants to pay home street and one more street TBD. He was leaning towards putting a higher number there, and then. We may not use all of it, it's just passed through from the state and get fully reimbursed, so. If we're comfortable going a little higher. Realizing that it's just a pass through, he was suggesting actually one fifty. If we don't want to do that for whatever reason, we can probably back that off a bit. But I didn't know how, if we had to.
Long as it's money in, money out.
It's money, and so if we can put one fifty there, one fifty down below for chips. And we may not end up using all of that.
Right, we'll use what we get or or not.
Yeah, he, he keeps a good eye on exactly what the funds are. At the state level, and so this is really just a pass through.
What's the chips expense line? Anything else on the revenue side then? Okay, expenses, I'm gonna skip past the board dollars, we can come back to that. Bear with me, I'm susceptible line by line here to make sure. My numbers match Jessica's. The clerk treasurer contractual, that's the Toshiba, we were talking about possibly using that line for scanning quote, do we have a?
We don't have a quote, we're getting a quote tomorrow, but. That I did, we did some scanning arms, so you could scan like. Three hundred twenty nines, and so I have this rough estimate that if we did it in-house. And I can maybe even remember what, we, we may want that. Make eight thousand, eight thousand five hundred dollars to scan sixty five boxes of archives.
Just to scan. But that's just to scan, not to do anything.
That would be scanning, digitizing, scanning and digitizing them, and they want them to file. Searchable.
And you're suggesting that you and Jess would be doing that?
I just would have gone with us to think about what if this company charged an average of our hour of free. How many hours it would take, so we should be looking at something in. The range of that, and I'm frankly seeing what they come in at. With two hours, three hours in a day, not a particular public. It's something to consider if they come in with a bonkers number.
Is that something that the two of you could, if we had a summer youth program helper?
We will not get a summer. We could hire seasonal worker, but the program has decided, we're looking in different directions. Based on the campus that applied, I was instructed that we probably weren't going to be matched.
Really?
Doesn't mean I can't reach back out and say, we have actually dedicated specific project that might fit someone who has applied to me, it's different this year.
Is this something that the two of you could tackle one box at a time over a year?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's approximately two hundred and eighty hours. So that's. In seven weeks. Yeah, I mean.
What if we just did a box a week?
That's kind of what I'm thinking, but again, I'm interested to see maybe the Toshiba number is workable, and because recognizing that is seven weeks. That the deputy or myself is not doing.
I'm not thinking about taking necessarily away for a dedicated period of time, thinking, or if you could add again a box a week.
It's still the same, you kind of answer that, because seven means work at work, but we're not, it's not part of the ever. But yeah, I actually, I think we could, if they come in with some really great number, it might be worth. Do you can you wait till next budget session, because I'll have enough for from then by then? What would we give up, I guess, if we had any major? To the water, the water building system, just got recall, we are digitized, we can spend a little more time really better moving the sharepoint. And moving the digital archive. Into sharepoint, and we need to do the personnel policy, other than grant work. I'm not sure there's any other major lifts.
The personal policy is going to be all, I mean, I would like to, I would like to. If, if it's okay with the board, and you think that that's something you and Jess can do between now and. We'll even say, you know, summer of twenty six. In the next eighteen months. Then we don't need ten thousand dollars in that line.
Yeah, I like, I like that also.
And if Toshiba says we'll do it for twenty five hundred bucks, then we'll just, we'll go over somewhere else.
The other thing, so let's make that a hybrid, which they say, but at least if we can scan it. And just name it box by box, and we go through it, and we have to look at them and compile them. We could be at our desks, and we kind of still answering a lot of questions, like first being upstairs, do you know what I mean? Like, we can see that. Do you want to leave some in there or not?
How does that sound to everyone?
Yeah, if she thinks it's doable.
Just suggest do it instead of.
Like, I'd like some level though, right, like cut it down to five, maybe? Right, rather than zero, I was gonna go to one.
They, I mean. Other than last year. Because we thought we were gonna hire a bookkeeper, that's been historically a very low line, it's been like two hundred and fifty bucks.
Right, fair enough.
But I could see a thousand, just in case there's some random. Office need.
Okay.
Okay, all right. And then again, like with better, if I give a number, maybe you say something like two thousand.
Hey, let's see what. Engineer, what do we think about this MRB line? A fourteen forty point four.
I know. You, listen more about what goes in there, the things that I think about, what I think about coming up. I've been thinking of that. Coming out of bottom line, I think budget, whatever. I'm sure there's a whole bunch of catchall, I would be grateful. I don't know how to think. About that, recognizing going over.
So this number that you see, where is that? That number includes. Forty six South Street Review. Which we still have a developer's agreement in place to get reimbursed for. And a lot of fire and EMS building work. Which eventually we will recoup.
I see.
So we have the chat, chat print. That mostly downed, it was sidewalk.
There's no, there's a lot of work coming online this year for. There'll be engineers, there'll be surveys, there'll be right of way work, but that all gets reimbursed. Well, this is twenty percent match, I think, twenty percent, there's a match for it. Which we'll have to borrow. But it's not, it's not aligned at a, we'll spend.
I mean, is there a way to add a line for that? With some of those offsets, like the. Right, if the irony in this building is in there, it feels like that should be. Located to those budgets. You know, I mean, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be just landing in our general fund if those are. Specifically because those are contracted costs, like I get, I get that that's well meaning and. Community minded, right, like we're essentially offsetting. Through the cost of our municipal partners, and I. And I like that, I like the community mindedness of that, but it does feel like that should be landing ultimately in one of those budgets.
It will, and that's a Dwayne question for how and when. Because we're not able to. Once we start receiving reimbursement, so if we start receiving reimbursement for something that we paid for in the fall of twenty twenty four. That money starts getting reimbursed in the fall of twenty twenty five, I'm not sure exactly how that moves lines in, lines out.
But well, and because we're charging, right, because we're charging now. We don't want to put that on the, on the cost for twenty four and then. I see.
Well, it also sounds like. There's a. On the year, we're like, we are being community minded in absorbing this cost for now, but then it will be also reimbursed, so it's also a little odd to ask. Then to anyone else to pay it because.
And then get the reimbursement.
The reimbursement, like there's a weirdness there. I like the idea of tracking it individually maybe, but that's more of like a keeping conversation, really. I feel like it makes it more clear, but I don't know that it changes anyway.
Also, are some of the planning, um, costs not reimbursable, am I just thinking? Like, a lot of this is the preliminary work of. MRV to go get, right?
Right, the grant writing, I imagine, is probably the one thing that. Isn't easily reimbursed.
Yeah, but the lion's share of that money is. The site planning, the blocking. The diagramming.
I think if we're thinking about. Teasing apart the conversation, but if we're thinking about just like, what should that line be? For us going forward, I think it's. I'm assuming it's mostly covering grant writing, then catch all. Questions to interview. I don't know how to think about the number for that is. And it depends, there could be an argument that we should have put some of that. Then helping us go after the fire should have been actually baked into the fire budget. So I can see an argument there, but also it's, maybe it's. I don't know what the, what the price is there, if it's enough to be concerning.
I think. First question as far as budgeting goes. It seems to me like keeping this line roughly even. Right, I certainly wouldn't want to increase it for costs. That are going to get allocated elsewhere. Or directly reversed, right? At least without a corresponding revenue line, which feels a little bit extravagant in this context, right, because it should be. When it does actually hit that way, it'll become, it'll become a revenue line on the EMS or fire budget. Right, so we don't want to do it that way here.
No, it'll become a revenue line in our general, so if we go back to the revenue side, there is a. There's a couple of blacked out lines.
Oh, yeah, yeah, fair enough.
The miscellaneous grant, there's reimbursements, twenty seven sixty nine. A lot of those black, some of those blacked out lines, not a lot of them, some of those refunds of prior year expense, some of those blacked out lines. Date all the way back to the Main Street project.
Only Moses.
So. There is a function, and I just don't remember exactly how it works. From an accounting perspective, but there's a function for. You know, big, big. Big influx dollars in a year. Which is, does not line up directly with the spend. In that particular year. I don't know how Dwayne deals with that. I don't know that we need to worry about it at this point. Well, sidewalk has its own line because of what we just got done with. South Street, that forty eight eighty seven federal estate grant aid sidewalk was the revenue, revenue was the money in line. For the last safe routes to school, great.
So when, when I look, I have a concern, which is that in twenty two, twenty three, which is my Excel sheet column O. The actual spend was forty five thousand. And then last year, the actual spend is forty two thousand. This year will be at fifty seven. So. Keeping funding at twelve thousand five hundred seems a little bit odd.
But the lion's share of all of those numbers were reimbursed.
Or do I need to do any work to confirm?
Dwayne question, because for sure, in some of those years, there was a lot of. Invoicing going to. The developer of forty six South Street.
So the ten in the village road this year projected and actual. Will be reimbursed, and the eighteen from the fire EMS building likely the lion's share that could come out of it, so that's. Twenty eight thousand, which pushes it, then I guess, a little bit. No, it doesn't, and we put in thirty thousand.
So there's, if you, if you, so if you have to go back to June. You, what did you, what was the number you just mentioned for Village Grove? That's what hasn't been invoiced, there were a lot of invoices that went out prior to.
Right, those went, yeah.
Right, so you have to add those into the revenue we perceive.
The ones that they already sent out.
Yeah. That's, that would be the money due. So I, so I think, I think Ben's right, I think the, this line is more for. Non-reimbursable.
Okay.
MRV spend.
That's the way, if there's a bad way, I should. Putting the reimbursable spend, so it doesn't.
I would also ask about the. How, how to allocate fire and EMS costs. And I know, I know that that'll sort of come back to us. Right, but we have this continuing conversation about. What, what cost the village bears without recoup, without recouping? And even if this is something that we eventually recoup, it's still sort of an initial outlay that we wait to return, and I'd like that to show up somehow.
Yeah, and I mean, it seems like it could be added both revenue and expense line in, if we can figure out a way of teasing apart pieces, right? Once we've teased them apart, then now we've got a revenue line, expense line, that should be the budget in the firing, that's what it's right, but first we have to.
Right, and part of it is distinguishing, I think, the difference between an accounting question for Justin Dwayne. And, and more of a political, like, budgeting question for us and then our contracting partners, right? How, how we play that out? But I guess I, I mostly just mean to put a, a bug in your ear that I, I hope that this can be reflected somehow.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, now I'll consult with a professor.
This is the first time we're doing. Probably since I made a larger EMS and fire grant writing cycle situations, it would have been a great muscle for us.
Right, right, well, I think the last time we did it, it was for. They did the like initial architecture stuff.
Oh, the kind of totally sketch drawing stuff, but yeah, now I mean, no.
Now that, now we're, that we're into real, real work, right, with real money behind, it definitely changes the landscape.
Right.
So do we feel okay leaving that at ten?
I think that's fine, actually, right? I mean, if the premise is trying to sort of shunk those costs to where they actually go. Right, making sure they're assigned to their respective budgets lines.
Yeah. Unless there's a, I mean, it's twelve times down for three years, or they have to increase their rates.
Well, I guess the question is, sorry, everyone, that's like, do we have a rough sense of what's in that line that's not. Press away and fire.
It would be, it would be the grand proposals. It would be the grand proposals.
Cause that, that's it. Number we're basically.
Here you go, so here's our proposal to write the uh, the fire grant screening.
Hey, I guess twelve five is fine.
Right, I was just, I, I had no sense of.
Well, I, I don't mean to belabor this, but I, I do feel like the grant writing for fire. Should live in the fire budget, should, but it doesn't.
Well, we should move to work.
I guess, I guess that's what it matters, is like, irrespective of this, I'm, I'm fine with twelve five. But I do think in future years, that should be the direction that we move, those budgets should be.
Should it, even though it's for a capital asset? Not the operations, it's for the actual.
Distinction there, I find, I find very, very positive, right, like, there's nothing about a capital asset that exists independently of operations, right? Well, fire, fire truck independent, a fire truck's capital asset, spread out, yeah, I mean, I, they're. Inseparable, I would say, and the, you know, the building is, is the same.
I feel like my takeaway is this is like a catch all, we should, and, and we have. Experience breaking things out, like putting stuff in sewer lines and. So like, we'll just keep picking at that as we identify important lines to break out, and so. I don't think we should go higher, I don't, I almost wonder if you go lower, but I don't have enough data to narrow it to twelve five six.
Yeah.
All right, we'll leave it at twelve five. Start giving some more thought to how we'd break out. Grant related items.
Wait, I'm sorry. You know, eight thousand nine hundred for the uh planning grant for bank stabilization. Eleven thousand is for. Uh, and more, more for max stabilization. So. Those are definitely, that would be in there, right, so right now, we just said about ninety thousand dollars.
Which will repeat, yeah, those are not, not, which will repeat.
Which will repeat, okay, um, so it, again, we don't think we have. That's. Those are the big ones, everything else general planning is. Okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, the big thing that we're still going after is a little more than water. There's some more planning around water, but.
That is definitely.
Well, that's water budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think I'm proud of the conversation, I don't think there's anything else outside of probably a three fire again, which brings back the fire conversation, I think. Yeah, at some point, maybe we go back to the stabilization, then we. I don't know, like I was saying, St. Village, we've addressed enough problems. In all of set up time, keeps dropping. Uh, since we're writing, I was just scanning. Building contractual.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
The IT contractual.
Oh, I was actually like a bill of contractual.
Yeah.
I had a recollection you said that would be.
There was a. Which has seventy four thousand. I just wanted to make sure we were okay with that.
Oh, I guess it's.
And also we're the. When, I was hoping that. Clint might have a number ready, and he might still. But the intention was to do the roof in something like three sessions. So to what extent, if they're gonna, if we're gonna spend down the buildings or. Are we not planning for the fact that there will be two more sessions to have to do after this?
No, it's a. Although, actually, now that I'm looking at it, we didn't bump it to last year.
No, it's the same as last year.
Maybe I'm, I'm this, I just was higher than I anticipated, but let's see if we use. Better than that, so. Maybe it's some.
There's eighty four thousand um building.
And we are adding ten to it this year.
Okay, so maybe that's.
Yeah, and I think the number, uh, Clint was thinking with five and ten for the section.
Yeah, and then, but the next section will be bigger.
Sure. Yeah.
And the way that might change any of that design.
No, be reserves.
Okay, so.
That's why I, I need a, I need a real number from. As to what that's gonna cost.
That the reset.
Yeah.
Is there anything I can do to help get that?
Am I remembering incorrectly that there's a repair line though? From building maintenance line?
Maintenance and repairs is right under.
That was the, that one right there. Don't, don't mind me. I mean, to me. That's where a roof goes. Right, contractual is.
That was more just a reminder of that shop, so yeah.
Got it, what, what is usually in that office contractual?
Yeah.
Office still in contractual?
Yeah.
Oh, that's all stuff, that's uh.
That's like paper.
It's paper, it's Dropbox, it's um.
Paper towels.
Paper towel.
Toilet paper. Okay, cleaning, like that kind of stuff, like.
Uh, cleaning, cleaning supplies, but then um building personnel. But it is, it's all those little. It's all those incidents, it's basically opposite, but we're. Extra supplies for the state.
And a roof.
No, again, I just wanted to make sure.
Roof is coming out of reserve, okay, all right, sorry, I was, I was missing that.
Yeah.
I just was thinking about it on the day, I was thinking about contractual.
I guess, okay.
So um, you're right, it should probably go. Should I can move it out to the, is really.
You don't need to know.
You put it as.
Well, you don't need to remember the roof, Dusty needs to remember.
We need to remember that I want to make sure. It hasn't been. But okay, that's.
For work is personal.
Um, building IT contractual. That is. Phase three of the server project plus E code. And as much as I want to get our laws on E code. Do we consider phasing in? Not facing in, do we consider splitting up over different years? Phase three of HPM stuff and. E code being the next thing. Rather than. Knocking the both out.
We were rough, sense of the size of those two.
HPM was what, thirteen?
Uh, five hundred dollars for a panel match with phase two of HPM, eleven K for phase three, general code, we sign a contract. So I need to look at that, and it was like, we paid this.
Remind me what phase three is for each?
Phase three is replacing the hardware for the actions. The general code, I would have to look, it was like we pay the initial amount, we need to do the review and then pay the remaining.
Yeah, but I don't believe the contract said we had to do it by a certain date.
You don't believe it.
I don't think so.
So yeah, I should check that.
But what's the dollar?
Eight thousand. And then there's a twelve hundred dollar.
All those numbers don't add up to forty two.
The other stuff is, um, so if you look in the site, you can see the equation to everyone that is. Here, um, so HPM is basically. Of twelve hundred dollars a month.
So the E code piece was what, eight?
Yeah, plus nine, the twelve hundred.
So that, so yeah, so phase three HPM is, call it eleven five.
Yeah.
And this is nine, so if we can spread that out over two years instead of one.
Is that asking the? Base three is literally just that equipment. We'd ask them for installment?
No, we would do that this year, and we would do E code next. Unless, unless we want to just. Effectively, what it means is round numbers, effectively, it would mean that line becomes thirty. Four this year and stays there, plus or minus.
Right.
Versus going to forty two and change, and then having it drop back in next year.
I don't think there's any urgency on that, on E code, as much as I think. We all want to see that happen. Um, just one, just like, point of interest though, is in your formula, the twelve hundred is not. Monthly, is that, is that annual?
That's the token group for general, it just sounded the same as my estimation of HPM.
Okay.
So what would that number be without? General code.
It would be. Uh, that number.
Forty two, five, one, seven.
Thirty three.
I'd like to plug that in, pending. Your confirmation that. We can hold off on. The last part of the E code migration or general code migration.
Thirty three, nine, one, seven.
Thirty three, two, twenty. Municipal Association dues, it's been a long time, remind me who we're paying that to, is that NICOM?
Yeah.
Used to be. There isn't, there's a note that says Quio Finger Lakes Tourism in Tom's Chamber. Oh, yeah. Yep, there's a note that says twenty eight hundred.
Yep, okay, twenty eight hundred. Fine.
Street lighting.
Oh, yeah, I got the name to answer.
Street lighting contractual?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is, sorry, so what would I answer?
It should be in there.
I see. Is that what that says?
Yeah.
Which line are we?
Or on one sixty three, it's for cheap, maybe one, two, four.
So we have actual costs um in, in W column. Right, thirty four, thirty five, and so then I would protect the seventeen oh one, seventy one, I thought for seven.
Nice thing, got it.
Why was that nice, why were you saying?
Cause there's five in the W.
So it would have.
Twelve, twelve.
Oh, no, wait. Um, I, no, I just did the equation. So, I, I, I stand.
Right, but I think that, I, yes, I think I agree.
And that includes like the, the updating.
Basically, anything that breaks, anything that breaks, they'll fix it, and as things break, they'll fix it with the new system thing, yeah. And if anything, I could see this jumping up a little bit because I don't think it includes the new lights. Impressive way that we've just accepted, so we need to work on getting that.
Oh, I mean, new lights is that?
I don't think it's a ton compared to the whole system moving up, I think it'll be minor or maybe nothing, but. Dusty's working on collecting all the information that they need to add it. But, yeah, sorry, I called out, I didn't notice the subtle detail of seven and five months in the equations.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my brain was complicated that night.
No, it makes sense, no.
So forty six, one, five, seven, that's, that's the number.
I think that's.
Um, sidewalk contractual, this is mainly uh. This is, is this Dusty's repair work?
Yeah, that's the line we do for any sidewalk repair.
Okay, um. Uh, Three Falls LDC. I know we've talked about thirty. And I know the town allocated thirty, but that's calendar year. You think we're gonna need thirty? This year?
So. The grant that we may or may not have requires that we have the match on hand before we start getting money.
What's the match, twenty percent?
Match is low.
Well, so we probably have it.
We have it now. But if we start getting. I mean, it gets a little dicey if we have to pay out any contracts upfront, which I don't think we do, but there is a little bit of a gamble. I don't think we need to do it, we did run into that weirdness this year where we paid ten in one calendar year and then ten. No, it wasn't, no, 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 it wasn't, I mean, it was, it was collective, that was me and you, you shouldn't own that at all.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um. It, I guess the point is it gets a little bit dicey, I'd rather keep it clean and just pay it and not have to. Deal with. Or sort of the jockey. Um, but I, that's not to say that it's not possible, right, and we could do it, and we'd be fine. Right, if we want to split it into next years.
No, 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 the thing about calendar year, I'm thinking about, we think. Twenty twenty five, calendar twenty twenty five. That's gonna be higher.
Yeah. Um, I'm not sure if I'm answering the right unspoken question, but I think to answer what I think is the unspoken question here, we will need thirty. That is, that is a baseline number. Unfortunately, yeah.
Um, planning legal. I actually don't think, if we've carried zero for the last several years. Again, unless anyone. Knows anything I don't or, or is concerned about the unknown. Since the end of the planning boards. Forty six South Street Review in twenty eighteen, nineteen. We haven't had any planning board legal costs. So I don't know that we need to anticipate, you know, five thousand dollars worth.
I think, I mean, that's fine by me, as long as the. Uh. You know, Ben's committee. Has a separate line, right, for a guy, guy consults.
Yeah, I guess that'd be the only question.
Where, where are those? We were taking that out of zoning legal.
I don't think it's massive either, it's more. I think this is through next. And we might get to the point of wanting to kind of go up a full pass. The next round, but I still don't know that's terrible. But, um, yeah, it should go out of zoning. Yeah, it should come out of the zone.
I think that's, I don't see any reason to plan there. Plan for planning.
So let's zero that out. Trees, you'd mentioned that we haven't had really any takers.
We do have two, so that'll go up to twenty two. No, the actual will go up to.
Yeah, projected actual, sorry.
Yes. Yeah. That's about where we are. Um, I see a world where this. We can transition into. Starting to cover some of those sidewalk offsets maybe, or our hope had been to transition into planting. Doing more work. So. I would certainly make the case there that that money should be used.
Leave the five.
Yeah.
Rest, let me just make sure. What do you have for a bottom line expense number? One more time, please.
Three, eight, three, six, five, seven.
It's evidently not keeping up.
About thirty two thousand five hundred dollar difference. Wait, I was three, eight, yeah, three, three, six. It's thirty two thousand five hundred. It wouldn't have phantom numbers because my number's higher. So you would have to have a phantom negative number.
What's, how much is your number higher by?
Thirty two thousand five hundred.
Okay. Mine's higher by forty one, seven, thirty. So fun fact on that.
Anyway. Cause I have village board numbers plugged in.
Oh.
Okay, so I knew two five is perfect.
We chose different numbers.
We did. Okay. Yep. So before we circle back to the village board. My question to you all is. Ideally. But ideally, what would you want the tax rate to be?
So before we go there, can we go to general? What we have in fund balance? Like we want the number?
Yeah. So fund balance includes unfortunately includes what is owed to it by water. So it's not a cash flow fund balance, but it is an accounting fund balance.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Which is what presumably the comptroller cares about, right?
Right, so Dwayne comes to present our audit for May thirty first, twenty twenty four. He'll give us two numbers, remember? There's the. Um, the audit will show a fund balance of three seventy five, five, six, two. Which is not a big number. But that does not include. All of the fire and EMS revenue, which we have already received. Uh, but not accrued, because the audit has to be done as a few years ago on an accrual basis. Our actual. Cash basis fund balance would be nine twenty. One, two, five. However. That includes the four hundred ish. That is owed to it by water.
Oh, that includes both water that's owed to it and fire and EMS that are owed to it?
No, not yet paid. No, it includes fire and EMS as received. So if water paid back general tomorrow. If water had paid back general on May thirty first.
Right.
It would be nine twenty, call it. Subtract out the four hundred that's sitting over water that hasn't been repaid yet, some of which is starting to come back, I hope, this year. But the number, the number that we can comfortably use for our kind of ongoing. Calculations that we have always done is the nine twenty.
And remind me the the sort of standard calculation that the comptroller does. Is.
Well, so now the comptroller is gonna be looking at the accrual number.
Right. Right, but they're looking at generally you want to keep. Was it like ten to twenty percent of your expenses?
Ten, twenty percent of your budget. So we're we're not in red flag territory on the accrual number.
No, but we are sort of closeish.
Yeah, we're good.
So we're just under ten and then just over. Twenty three.
Right. So if. Or when, well. The accrual number also includes what water owes general.
But it's not a huge, I mean, I guess the the point is usually generally. We have a lot of flexibility there. And this year, maybe we don't.
I think we have a fair bit of flexibility because the cash basis number is large enough. Except for the fact that it includes what's owed to it from water. But no, I wouldn't, I would. I wouldn't see it as we can move, you know. Two hundred thousand. That's, that's. Which. Is kind of why I started with the with the rate question. So. Um, in twenty eighteen nineteen, so that was June of twenty eighteen, I believe our. So twenty eight, June of twenty eighteen. We had a tax rate of seven dollars and ten cents. The next year, twenty nineteen, we raised it to seven and a quarter. And it stayed there ever since.
Since twenty nineteen.
Since June of June, June tax bills of twenty nineteen had a seven twenty five rate. And of course, we know the levy's been, or the assessments been going up, so everyone's tax bill has been going up. But we've been able to avoid kind of the double whammy of increased assessments and increased rate. So I, and I believe, uh. There are no, we weren't reassessed this year. This spring we're in. So the the. Total, total assessment number we're using for this budget year is going to be the same number we use for next budget year, which will be the first time that's happened in a long time.
And it may continue to happen, right? I mean, they're gonna pause presumably, probably for the next. Wasn't it three years? Wasn't that the proposal?
That's, that's the talk, yeah.
No, Tom, the county, county assessment was proposing pausing. Updating their assessments. I think it was three years while they updated their internal software.
So the question becomes, do we keep rates flat? With the expectation that. Assessments are not increasing next year and we'll have to do some management of our fund balance if we want to keep rates flat yet again. Or do we want to do? Say it's mostly symbolic, it's money, but do a. Rate reduction this year. With the anticipation, we'll have to bump it back up next year. And if so, how much would we, what would we want that rate to look like?
That'd be going up to the twenty nineteen level or would be above that?
Well.
If you, if you're at seven point two five, do I have a? We're going back.
That goes to seventy five.
Cause when they change the budget list.
Okay.
I mean, with the recognition also that the levy is going up, correct, in all of those areas, correct?
Yeah, levy, the levy, so my, 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 I have a spreadsheet here that goes back to uh twenty eleven. In twenty eleven, the levy. What we needed to raise in property taxes was six hundred and twenty four thousand approximately. Last year was one point two million, so it's doubled in. From eleven to twenty four, doubled in thirteen years. And that is, uh. That's, I mean, that's gonna be payroll and. Maybe it is.
Even E M S is payroll.
Right, right, right.
Well, I think the uncomfortable truth is that means. Right, so I think in our last meeting, I was advocating. For an idea where we. We put off any trustee and board and mayor and deputy mayor, any increases to our pay. Until we're at an election year. Right, so that we're, those things are implicitly tied to like an immediate referendum on doing that, which I think is. Sort of the right phrase that those are. Are tied, but if we put it on this year, it will be. Inevitably impossible. Right, like that's, there's no way.
State funding for EMS comes through. Optimism. I mean, really, when I look at this levy number, I know that's really what it is. Yes, it's all payroll. But if you, if you have static employee numbers, yeah.
If we, I should, I feel like I should populate the, at least no change. For fun, because it's not.
Yeah, right.
Right.
I'm not looking at your spreadsheet, so. Current year levy, join a current year levy numbers, one, two, three, eight, eight, six, four.
Oh, actually, what's your bottom line number now that I've, I put in a s- a no change? Were you thirty two, seven, seven, five? Your difference from Jess's? When you had populated the.
I'm, my bottom line expense number is three, eight, six, six, one, five, six. What's yours? Us, I'm still.
Four, four, seven, three, eight, six, eight, four, two. But we would match the point that then, so I have.
Three, eight, six, eight.
Three, six, eight, four, three, two. We're matching until I put in. Four, fifteen, deputy mayor, seven, five, hundred, more contract and two grand, mayor, ten.
Twenty two, seventy six difference, twenty two, seventy six higher.
That's part of my deal.
But we were matching when I took those out. Do you have different numbers? Ten, ten, one, ten, ten, one, ten, ten, four. That number, so I'll leave one of the numbers.
Thirty three, two, twenty. Thirty three, two, twenty.
Mm hmm.
Or actually.
Yeah. I don't know the spreadsheet, if his printout matches what she has on screen either.
Let me email you. Well, no, cause mine isn't the same as what Jess is.
Jess is, is in.
See, now we need another.
I know, right? We need five of them.
I was, yeah, I think. You want, I mean, I can just hold my.
And there's a. I'm on the first top line, ten lines. Spare it down.
It's correct. This is.
Right.
The live version that's semi accurate.
Right.
Every year I tell myself to pay close attention. Following exactly what we do, and every year it's slightly different. I miss two hundred dollars.
Mm hmm.
Thank you.
That's true.
I mean, in terms of like the levy and the overall difference, it makes. It's not consequential, but it is frustrating that I. The detail.
Like we talked about, at some point, my head goes every year, I'm like, there's some website, we just upload all these spreadsheets and tell you what's different between all.
Oh, there is.
I'm sure.
Wait, what's the difference between all those spreadsheets? Like basically like, okay, given two spreadsheets, highlight the differences, right?
It's what Excel is for.
Additional formatting, no? This is, these are the joys of Excel games.
Do you have, um, my Excel sheet one seven, we can, we know it's just a random patch, or if I'm going to put you on the files.
You should control it up for. What line is it?
It's a nice cell sheet. And seventy three, so it's eighty, seventy five, ten. Yeah, definitely.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I didn't start working on, like, I didn't, I downloaded a new sheet. An hour before this, like, it shouldn't be different. It's only changes that I've made.
Okay.
Which makes. Even less sense.
Yep, there it is. Yeah, the FICO Medicare number is different. I can make. Songs and lyrics.
Minds and feelings. That's amazing.
Two, two, oh, four. What's that do?
Okay.
Okay.
That was it.
Alright, so back to the. Rate versus planning for next year question.
Can you say before you get there? What the final agreed upon bottom line number is?
I have. Three, eight, six, eight, four, three, two.
I don't know how that that feels like that, but okay.
Boxes in the top right of Jessica here's spreadsheet, the rates and assessments going back to years. I think that all it's.
Yep. That is all dynamic.
Okay, that's right. And that's showing us actually increasingly this year.
I mean, at a minimum, I think it should stay the same, based on the fact the assessment jumped.
I agree.
Quite a bit. I had.
Got a soapbox and talked about how the accessory was gonna go up so much, we should try and come in under. And yet here we are, looking at it, doing. That's a little tight maybe, but certainly it shouldn't go up, that would be my. Assessment, then boy help us next time.
Well, to be clear, like a, it's like twenty thousand in. Fund balance gets us to a flat rate. So it's not a huge amount.
So we have historically used, because. The idea is to try to come in under budget. We have historically used. Uh fund balance every year for a long time. I think the most we ever used. Didn't go back that far. The most we've ever used is a hundred and eight thousand fund balance. I can't even see what year that was. All those cells are shrunk down. Then we usually are in the forty to seventy range. We used eighty six two years ago, we used seventy seven last year. Right, eighty seven last year, sorry.
And we also. I mean, previously had a tax stabilization reserve. And so in addition.
The idea was to keep the rate flat. But put money away for next year in case. We were gonna have to raise rates, but wanted to try to keep it flat. Then we would have a reserve to spend that money, but effectively what we've been doing is using fund balance for the same purpose. We just we just shifted.
Shifted, yes.
If we got to a place where our fund balance is larger, wanted to. Well, if we wanted to not. Give it all back right away in the form of a giant tax rate cut, and we'd have to raise taxes the next year. Then we could play that. Stabilization reserve gate.
I do. If memory serves, that was, it's more of a long term version of the thing that we're doing now, but it. Covid functionally didn't ever play out that way, right? It was always the sort of next year is the. It's not how it.
So again, some of this is contingent on. Water rates doing what they are doing, so that we can pay back general. If. If we had gotten notification that. Assessments were going up again this year, which means we would see another assessment increase next year. Then I probably. Want to see a rate cut. But if assessments look like they're gonna be flat next year. Then we know our expenses are likely to be higher. Managing your fund balance to try to keep that offset next year seems to make sense.
Does it matter to you? We have paid back water, did pay back general, but we budgeted it should already. So budgeted, I don't know if this is a factor. And and last year on the water chat, you can see at the bottom that to pay back general, we budgeted one, one, one. Seven or six that has been paid to be. The bank accounts. And projections, they're correct, and my projections are modest.
So you've already paid back one twenty one in the year we're in.
Yeah, and not accrued any.
What's the um projected actual and water?
Projected action.
That we could pay back this year?
Well, what in addition could we pay over?
In this current budget year.
So if we're just simply a total of the revenue over seventy four thousand. Provided, because also expenses differ. Expenses might be under, yeah. Yeah, as long as my projected expense. And the projection revenue is over budget. But those are.
That sort of doesn't matter, because the unencumbered balance number from Dwayne includes. What water was general already.
Whatever, okay, so it doesn't matter that way, but it doesn't.
And what we have, what we're accounting for here. I mean, I think conceptually from purely just a tax perspective, keeping the rate the same. Is a reasonable approach. Right? The idea of lowering it. Artificially, right? To keep it level, we're still using some blood balance, even though it's not a lot. But we set ourselves up to be able to sort of cushion any blow and future assessment increases or future needs. Which I think I think is wisdom, right? Make sure that any, any. Any jumps or changes are cushioned. I don't see us overspending anywhere or being lax anywhere, right? There's nothing that I see that's easy to cut. So from that perspective, the question is really just, do we over or under allocate from general? And if that's the question. To me, I think it's reasonable. To aim for a conservative allocation from general fund, so that we can keep our rate the same. With the expectation that we are then. Hopefully, based on my conservatism, able to absorb any necessary increases or jumps in the future. To me, that feels. Feels like wisdom, very, very curious to hear that resonates with others. I mean, I do. I am sensitive to last year's conversation, sort of echoing in my brain, which is with an assessment jump like that, we should be able to lower it next year. And I'm a little disappointed, but that's not the way that this is playing out.
With a sense of like what range of. Fun balance we we can comparable using up to, like you would give a range, we haven't been much more than a hundred in the past. We're at twenty to get to flat. I think by my numbers, if we went to seventy, we dropped back down to like seven percent, like I don't know, worst world numbers seem reasonable to play around with.
Well. Part of the answer to that question is what we expect next year's budget to look like. So. If I'm just looking at. Our revenue actually dropped a little because of we're estimating lower on. Uh mortgage tax. And sales tax. In the wireless contract. But not a huge drop in revenue, we're talking. Fifty thousand ish, fifty four thousand. Revenue, so that that seems like we could potentially be similar on the revenue side next year. The expense side. The expense side went up a hundred and forty six thousand. Which is a lot better than last year's increase, apparently was four hundred and twenty three thousand. So spending goes up a hundred and forty six thousand, which is three point nine percent. Of that hundred and forty six thousand. Thirty six of it is uh thirty six thousand of it is. State retirement and payroll related. You've got the street lighting contractual, which was a big increase, twenty two thousand, big increase for that line. And then we've got EMS at eighty seven thousand. And police at eleven thousand. Building IT contractual, so the server upgrades thirty thousand, so. It's just a couple of things that effectively keep us growing at that three ish percent rate on the expense side. Until we can convince. Someone that we need. More state assistance than.
With the way assuming people will. Experience this right through their tax bill is that. If we keep the rate flat when their assessment is going up, they're gonna see quite a bit of a raise. If we. Keep the rate, if we drop the rate. Probably still gonna see a raise. I'm gonna have to do that to see that, but I imagine I'll still see the raise. It's kind of, I think the question is kind of, are we helping phase in that assessment for residents? Versus, that's an interesting way now. And trying to keep it. Level next year. And I kind of assume people would rather stays in.
That's an, that is an interesting framing, right? I you're right, I was being sort of selfish, like our, we should, we should cushion the blow of our changes. But you're right, the way that lands for people is. Sort of unrelated to what our rate actually is, right? It's more than.
Because the rate is an interesting number, but at the end of the day, like the levy is the thing that actually causes people's. Right, numbers to go, the assessment and the rate is just more like it's spread around.
That's intriguing. So if we put in seventy thousand of fund balance, we get down. Or actually just under seventy thousand, we get down to a. Seven for the rate. Just a decrease of three and a half percent.
Kind of what I'm thinking, it's like trying eight per seven. And we can talk about it now, recognizing that like we fully expect this is gonna go back up, but we we're doing this very specifically to like. Spaze that in.
And the levy is still going up eleven percent. Right? Like. Yeah, still, still a meaningful. But but to your framing, like we're cushioning the blow of that levy increase.
So let's also look at it from this perspective. And I don't disagree with anything either of me saying the last. I think the median home price of the village right now is around two fifty ish. A little higher, a little lower. Maybe a little lower, actually, but let's just call it two fifty. So if the median home price is two hundred and fifty thousand. Twenty five cents on the rate is sixty two dollars and fifty cents. Is sixty two dollars and fifty cents. So. Which probably, which probably feeds either argument, right? Because there's volatility in that number. Sixty dollars down, sixty dollars up, sixty dollars down, sixty dollars up. Certainly think we should keep it flat. I like the idea of reducing it, but I do think we need to protect that fund balance for next year.
That's how I feel.
For sure.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a hundred percent, that's why I still don't feel like I'm on really solid putting one. Is sixty five. Something like with or and and or like to something, is that I is gonna water that? Gives us confidence in that. Or is that? Actually us getting over our excuses, being a bit irresponsible.
I just feel like if we can keep it at the seven two five and then the seven two five for the next. You know? If we can keep that consistency and people see that it's not. I don't know, when I look at something and it goes. Lower, I guess it's just a reprieve for this year, you know what's gonna. If you know what's gonna come back realistically.
But the reprieve, I I like Ben's 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 thinking, right? The reprieve is in the actual dollar that you pay.
Right.
No one. Frankly cares about that. I think I focus on the rate and maybe we all do, but certainly I do. But as a taxpayer, you don't focus on the rate, you focus on like. Donald had figured that's going out. So if we can cushion that below, that number's gonna go, it's gonna trend up. And I do see some value in cushioning that. I like, I like that framing. I think that's what hits people.
So what's your expectation that if we do it at seven this year, where it's gonna have to go to next year?
It might have to go to seven two five again. But the thing is, the difference is that like you've seen, say that your bill is gonna go, you're saying sixty. If you say, say over two years, you're gonna see sixty and then sixty instead of one twenty this year and maybe nothing next year. And I think people would prefer sixty and sixty than a hundred and twenty.
Agreed.
I do.
Agreed.
And that's kind of, even though it's smaller numbers, like we're not talking. People out of their homes, thankfully, but like every little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. Like you said, a month's worth of a water bill.
And there is a risk, though, that we overspend the job. Have to overcorrect to seven point five. Right, and I feel like that's a limited. The probability there is minimal. I think we can manage it so that we don't have to get there, right? I don't see any or foresee any.
Yeah, that was.
Large jumps, right?
Right, that was.
We certainly aren't gonna see an assessment decrease. That's that's not in the cards, so we know that.
They're they're really the only variable on the. Revenue side. So we don't have a lot of control over his sales tax. Right. But we don't have any control over sales tax, but we, there is some stability to. To expectations of spending.
There's definitely a conservative piece that wants to just leave it at seven point two five.
That's that's my conservative.
If we run into problems next year, it's not our fault. Right? Like, I mean, I hate to, I hate to be so blunt about it, but it's like. Did our best if inflation goes up. It's on us, if you know what I mean, if it allows us. Some defensive, but at the cost of, I think we front load. Those changes, right?
Right, so your point is if if next year is really rough. And we end up going like seven point five. Did that change anything? What we, so we would have been in a better spot fund balance wise. Maybe we could add more fund balance to offset it when it's in a worse year.
Right.
When we do, and Frank, now that I'm thinking about it, we know that it's gonna get worse, right? Like. Living wage just went up to twenty five, like we have some rough. Some rough budgets ahead, for sure.
I feel like what I'm hearing though is that if we were to look at the optimistic fund balance, which is only on paper and not in reality. But water is in a good spot, and I think it's gonna continue to pay back. But water is in a good spot, and I think it's gonna continue to pay back. Make it not to full climb for like a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand a year. Or for. We'll be paying it back over four years.
Right, but the full debt is in that balance.
Start saying.
Full debt is what Dwayne has included in that balance, as, as a creep.
Right, but each year we'll be getting, say, a hundred or more back. Uh, sorry, sorry, you're saying the full debt is in that. I guess my questions are worried about the full debt, that was up to nine, including that, that was up to nine hundred, seems like pretty.
Oh, so maybe we discount it all, I see.
Right, like, if we look at the top, that biggest number, that feels like we've got space to play with.
Right.
Which feels uncomfortable because of the water situation, but we're, we're in a really good spot in my mind.
You're saying we shouldn't worry about the water not paying back, so we can really actually look at the nine twenty as a real number?
Right, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. You know, we haven't. We haven't looked, we haven't talked enough about water, so maybe that's the place to kind of pause slightly.
Well, can I actually, can I ask just, just a dumb question? Vernon, can you explain again the difference between the three hundred and seventy-five and the nine twenty number? Like, what? Which is the real number that we should be thinking about here? Or, or is it in between?
Actually, it's kind of between, like, it's three hundred plus revenue from fire.
So if, if water didn't owe general any money.
Right.
Nine twenty is the real, real number. Money in the bank, real number.
Right.
Because, good, we're looking back at last May.
Okay.
But, so May of twenty twenty-four, we. Covert Hector and Ulysses had paid their fire in EMS contracts. Those checks were deposited, so that money actually sits there.
Okay.
And if water didn't know general, then the real number in the bank at that moment would have been nine twenty.
Do you have a memory of what it was before? Previous years?
Five or six and change, five or six-ish.
Okay, so we are, we're trending up.
And that's, that's a much larger cash basis fund balance than we've had.
It does, okay.
We had budgeted hundred and twenty-one to go back into general to repay. In my, in last year's budget.
Well, I'm just trying to get a sense of. Right, like, if our rate goes up, or if our, say, if our rate goes down, then general fund, fund goes. Right, I just, I wanna get a sense of like, are we overcommitting our general fund? Was the seventy or eighty-seven that we put in last year too much? Does that mean that we like, we're trending down now because we overcommitted our general fund? Or are we trending in the right direction? Like eighty-seven is maybe a reasonable expectation that we could keep doing. And stay even on our general fund year over year.
Right, that's.
Cause it does feel like that's high.
It is high.
Except for. A bunch of consistent water.
I was just gonna say.
What, wasn't the total debt of the waterfront like four hundred them? So even five hundred.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying it's not a big number, it's just, I'm always.
Right, but if it's five hundred, we're still over. Well, I guess then we're sort of right in the sweet spot, right? Like, in terms of the controllers.
I also keep saying water, you didn't fully face it, all the changes so far with this year, so anything that we. I think we tried to project a little bit of that, but not as. Okay, based on.
Right, yeah, survey, yeah.
Okay. So that, I guess, what we're seeing in the spreadsheet, if there is.
The only, when we get there, it was modest about the projections is usage, that's the most modest usage of the capital charge.
Right.
People could use more water, we could have more, our green door expenses.
The capital, and that, is that the base rate as well?
It's, it's looking at a month, we'd say this is, this is a little average on the water side of both states, not the capital charge, usually basically.
So, yeah, I think, I think we could even argue, I could even, the numbers in water are conservative. And that we might see it go even higher, but right now it's.
Pay back faster.
Yeah.
I mean, not like wildly, but I think we can, can, we can keep on pace with doing a hundred thousand a year, I guess. So we, we've got a hundred and twenty.
Spend paid back.
Paid back already this year, or will.
It is, it's made back, yeah.
And we'll have another issue next year, so we're already halfway there. For this next budget.
But again, that won't change the fund balance number.
It will change the fund balance, but it does. Maybe let's be more comfortable not using it, but it's actually there and not a number on, because it may really.
Yeah.
No, without the cash actually significantly paid.
All that's to say, I think for me, like, using a number like seventy. For fund balance. Dropping the rate down to seven. Feels still. Conservative enough for me to feel comfortable. Right, it, it feels conservative, it eases some of the blow of what is, despite a rate decrease, still a levy increase. But not hugely. But it does soften the blow a little bit. In a way that makes me confident we can keep it up without having to do a wild backswing next year. I think that would be my.
Yeah, I think that's my only fear, is that if something comes up and happens and we really need to jump it, then it really is gonna look.
Yeah.
Wild. And feel, feel bad.
I still think that. It does. It's larger and, 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 I don't know, maybe people won't, won't matter, won't care, cause they feel like it's a big jump, but there's an argument maybe that this would have. You would have paid half of it prior, if that was money in your pocket. You've got to hold on to, and yes, the rate was a larger jump than we would have liked. But it wasn't taking money out ahead of. Right, we actually needed them, right, we're kind of like.
Yeah, what, fundamentally, I think that's true, right? Fundamentally, we are keeping this budget as low as we can. Period. And however we sort of play the game of general fund balance allocations, whether it goes this year, next year, whatever. Fundamentally, we are keeping as much money as we can in everyone's pocket, period, across the board at all times. It's really just a question of risk tolerance versus like. Damage, value, right? You know, I don't know how you frame that, but risk tolerance versus. I think easing that transition. But right, right, I know. I don't think there's any question of. Could we cut? So, you know what I mean? Are we putting money in that doesn't need to be there or something like that? I don't think that's it.
Right. Yeah, I think I'm with you, though. I think especially here in the state center last year, and we feel like fund balances. Stay relative, stable, not going up, and then using less than that this year feels. Comfortable.
It's been, uh, the rate has been seven dollars and twenty-five cents since twenty nineteen.
So.
So as a heads up, I'm gonna have to head out, Gracie.
The change, what we're gonna change is just this year, if, if that.
Really, it doesn't put your risk management hat back on. You thought you, you thought you'd gotten away.
Still trying to be. How it works, because the. Way that school ever since. So. I'm just trying to understand. Keeping in mind. The way that I'm thinking about, about it is the percentage of change, so the percentage of change from the previous year versus. This year. Not necessarily seven dollars and thirty-five cents, but more, what percentage? Was there last year? And then over. So from one point four four would be the percentage if we increased it, right? Just for the.
Use any fund balance, then over your. To offset the levy.
And dollar one raise, it would increase. Sixteen point five at the other time?
With no fund, yeah, yeah. But with a seventy thousand dollar fund balance, it would increase by ten point nine. And sidebar, thank you, Jess, for making this.
Thanks for helping me understand the calculation boxes last year.
So I think in the interest of time, why don't we sleep on it? Uh, why don't we plug in sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars as the fund balance? That gets us to seven zero zero two five, I think the textbook goes out. Four digits.
Can I make an annoying suggestion?
Let me get that actually zeroed out to seven even, I really do. Sixty-nine, I think it's sixty-nine, nine eighty or something.
That's exactly, that's exactly what it is, just, I'm sorry. Also, thank you for not going there immediately.
But, well, so, so here's the, here's the concern, is if there's a rounding error somewhere when it hits the tax bill and that drops to. So it's six dollars, nine nine nine. Six point nine 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 nine.
Yeah, it does go down.
Have we, have we pigeonholed ourselves into something that we don't, as long as we're being.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as we're being four decimal nerds here, do we, do we wanna cushion ourselves so that it shows up at seven?
Oh, fine, yes.
So I do like, I do like seven with. Four zeros there.
The four decimal thing is really a curse of our own nature, but yeah.
So you're plugging in the seven then?
Six nine seven five zero.
Six nine seven five zero?
Isn't, right?
No, not enough.
The seven point zero zero.
To seven point zero zero.
Yeah. So let's sleep on that, the debate is between reducing it to seven dollars, the rate to seven dollars per thousand, leaving it. Full, leaving it flat where it was this year, seven and a quarter.
And Vernon, did you calculate what? Savings that is from the. What savings that would be, you know, the rate reduction and the savings that would be for the average home, that's what you did, right?
It's about, it's sixty-two dollars and fifty cents on. A two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. I don't actually know off the top of my head what the median home price is right now, but it's somewhere in that range.
Okay.
And immediate sales price was last year, right? Yeah, we don't, we don't, the median, the median, the median assessment. I don't think is two fifty, so we'll be a little bit higher. And then we think about it between now and our Monday meeting, because we should have budget time, our agenda's not too heavy, is it? Um, I would like to tackle water and sewer, which I think should be pretty straightforward. I don't think. We're not gonna talk about it tonight. Yeah, I have to. And then unless there's a, unless there's some, unless our agenda gets heavy. Or we run into a controversy in water and sewer, um, then we can revisit this conversation. Monday, and then potentially be done with budgeting. Any other thoughts for the evening?
Five days.
If there are no other items, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.